Good evening. I will call the Tuesday, Monday, August 8th, 5:00 PM board meeting to order. And we have two board members absent and we have India Johnson via telephone. So if you hear a voice from up here, it's India. So I would ask all of you to join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, and please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I've asked Director Mills to read our mission statement tonight.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Now, we will go to item A, which is the public hearing tonight for the East High School East Parking Lot Project. And this is a notice of the public hearing. We do have Zach Kelly and Michael Coughlin here. And yeah, and we're going to declare this open. And is there anyone that would like to address the board regarding this public hearing? Seeing no one, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, this has to be roll call. Janelle?
Aye.
India Johnson?
Aye.
Jesse Knight?
Aye.
Stacy Mills?
Aye.
Sue Flynn is aye. Motion carried five zero to close the public hearing. The next item agenda is item B, and it's a board celebration. And this is the WCC Cyber Club trip to Orlando, Florida. And this is for information only, but on March 28th, we approve the trip for the team to go June 28th through July 2nd. And we do have Kyle here and many students that also attended, and we'd like to hear all about it. So if you'd come to the microphone and state your name and make sure the green button is on. Thank you.
So I'll just, I'll just turn it over to the students and they'll introduce themselves and then just talk a little bit about their experience.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So I'll just introduce the students and then they'll talk a little bit. They'll introduce themselves and talk a little bit about the trip. So one of the, there was eight students that went. One of the students who's not here wants pictures, so I may be standing over there taking pictures or whatever, so. But otherwise, you know, if there's any questions, you know, make sure you ask.
And congratulations on your Gold Star Award this year, too.
Oh, yeah. You got that. So my name is Michael Rubenacker. I was here since the start of the club, which was last spring, and I'm glad that I got to see it all the way through to this competition before I left for senior year.
And what are your future plans? We're going to ask you.
So I'm going to be attending Iowa State for software engineering with a minor in cybersecurity. I'm actually moving in a week from Wednesday already.
Oh, yeah.
And yeah, I'm excited for that.
And what was your favorite part about being on the team?
Um, I would say it was like, so as a team, we didn't just like work together. I mean, we were all cool with each other and it was just fun to be around each other. And then when we got to do the competition as well, it made it a better environment for everybody. Like, you could ask a question, not to anyone in particular, and just someone random would shout out an answer to you and you wouldn't feel offended or anything that someone, like someone's just helping you with the answer. And it just made for a really helpful environment and very educational.
Awesome. Thank you. Good job. Same questions for you.
Well, I don't remember them, so you might have to re-ask. Uh, I'm Bo Smith. I graduated from Hudson and I joined the cyber team last fall, so I've only been in for a year.
Your future plans and your favorite part?
Uh, I'm also going to Iowa State for software engineering, minoring in cybersecurity. And I also move in next Wednesday.
Are you roommates?
No.
No, okay. That was a big no by both of you, so. That collaboration between you two must not have been so good. Just kidding.
And then I think my favorite part was all the learning that happened. Uh, so we did a lot of different competitions, a lot of offensive and defensive exercises, and got to experience a lot with cloud work, Raspberry Pis, remote systems. And it was just a good, really good learning experience. I was only in for a year and I learned a lot.
Awesome. And you went back to Hudson and told your fellow underclassmen, "Go take that program."
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for making the trip to do that, to come from Hudson. Um, it's not quite as easy as it is for our kids, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
My name is Obet Kianbanzahoko, and then I'll be a senior this year. I go to West High School and I'm a tech intern. And then this whole club was... This whole club was amazing and then it's just an amazing way to learn. And then it just improves your daily life and then you kind of have another point of view on stuff and events that are happening around the world.
I have to call Obet out for a minute because he came in and actually he did some work for us. And I'm telling you what, this young man has got a lot of skill.
Thank you.
So thank you, Obet.
Thank you.
I'm David. I just graduated from West High School and I'm going to Hawkeye next year for cybersecurity. And I joined the program in the fall and that was just an amazing experience. Cause like, I like tech, I like those kind of stuff, but I didn't know like there's like the thing I learned. So I was trying to learn things, but when I joined the team and then I went to competition, I really gained like some real work experience, so that was really good. And the team, everything, so that was real fun for me.
Great, great. Well, thank you all for coming. That is awesome.
Congratulations, yeah.
I just want to say, you know, Sue, I mean, I think really, you know, what you guys are working on is amazing because, you know, you know, you talk about rural experiences. Unfortunately, you know, we've had some school districts nearby that had some bad experiences with, you know, intrusions like that and data breaches. So I mean, what you're going into is, I mean, going to get more and more important as we, you know, they get sharper, we'll get even more sharper protecting, so Matt can sleep better at night.
That's what I was just going to say, that's the stuff that keeps him up at night.
Well, that, thank you guys so much. Do you have anything, Janelle or Stacy?
No, just that we're really proud of you and congratulations.
Yeah.
Kyle, I was just going to ask if you at some point could get a list of the, all the kids on the name, or all the names of the kids on the team for me? Thank you.
And Will, Dr. Aqui's gone tonight, so Dr. Smith is going to take a picture of you four with Kyle. Maybe you could hold a computer or something.
Where are you going, Sue?
I'm not in the picture. I didn't go to cyber school. I think you're the shortest, Kyle. Chair, why don't we take one with you in there, too?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. There we go.
I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to the board and the district for the, for the support with the, with the club. Um, you know, fairly new. Uh, we participated in four competitions and so actually five counting the summer ones. So the first, we did Cyber Patriot in the fall. Um, and so that was a series of three weekends, one in October, one in November, one in December. And then we got first in the state, so that qualified us for another weekend in January. Um, and so then after that, we did PICO CTF, which was an online competition, Capture the Flag. And then after that, we did two Iowa State competitions. Um, one, David has the shirt from on...
Not the right shirt.
Yeah, so one, and one of them was pretty cool. It was sponsored by the, by the Army and it was international. And so they were competing against teams from Kosovo. Um, and then Iowa State, DMAC, and the Career Center were there at that one. And then the other one was the Iowa State High School competition. And so we ended up getting third in that. Um, and then this summer, the Cyber Guardians, which was again sponsored by the U.S. Department of Energy, Argon National Laboratories in Chicago, so.
That's super. Just gives them great context, too. I mean, what an awesome opportunity for you guys.
Yeah. Yay. Thanks for representing the district well.
We appreciate it.
Hey, Kyle, will you try recruiting some girls?
We do, we do have one girl, but yes. Yes, always, always trying. Well, that's part of your job, too. You guys could get girls in there, too, right? Yeah. Yeah. Thank you guys very much. We appreciate it. The next item is item C, and it's another board celebration, and it's the Kids' Heart Challenge. And I'll give the background here. Through the American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge, students learn about heart health while helping to raise funds to protect all hearts, especially other kids. Through fun activities, students discover ways to take care of their hearts and brains while practicing kindness, gratitude, and learning ways to distress. Currently, seven of our 11 elementary schools participate in the Kids' Heart Challenge. By participating, schools have the chance to earn additional PE equipment. Shelby Christ is here and she will tell us all about the program and the Waterloo Schools' participation. Hi, Shelby.
Is it on now? Okay, great. Thank you guys for having me. Um, so if you've heard of the Kids' Heart Challenge before, um, our program used to be called Jump Rope for Heart. So I'm sure a lot of you in here remember as Jump Rope for Heart. Our program has been around for almost 50 years. Um, so we're coming up on a couple of big years here celebrating how long this program has truly been around. And the Waterloo Community School District has been involved in this program from the beginning. And we truly appreciate the support of the board, of the administration, at the individual schools, for the schools to participate in our program. So it is an optional opportunity for each individual school to participate. Um, and as we had just stated, there was seven schools who were participating of the 11 elementaries last year. And we have eight pre-registered to participate this year. So we have a couple more schools to go to be at 100%. And so I have a little bit of news to share when we get to that point. Um, but just to kind of give you kind of a rundown of our program, if you go to that second page there, jump on board, the benefits that the schools get and the students from participating in our program is so much more than the fundraising side of the program, which is, has been traditionally known. Ever since we changed our program and kind of revamped it to the Kids' Heart Challenge, we've really focused on the student overall wellness and gaining resources and accessing resources that all students can get ahold of, regardless of the fundraising component. So it's very important to us at the American Heart Association to have equitable, equitable healthcare, access to free and, um, free information, and for all students to be able to get the same information about how to take care of their health. And so through our program, it's a, it's a free program for our schools to enroll in. Um, the benefits that it has for the school, for the teachers, the principals, both the classroom teachers and the PE teacher are supplemental curriculum resources. So when they get on, on the online program, they can access dozens of resources right at their fingertips. And again, it's traditionally been in the gym, but it's, we're really pushing it to the classroom as well. So if a school wanted to run this through the PE department, they can. If the school counselor wants to run the program, I have several schools who go through the school counselor as well. Um, but because we want all students to be able to take the challenge. So it's free for every student to take that challenge um, and to choose whether they want to move more, to drink more water, or to be kind. So those are some big parts of our program. There is that fundraising component to the program in which we've been pretty impressed by some of the schools here in the Waterloo School District. You might have a student who you're not super sure, you know, how much they, they would want to raise, but they are really, they really take charge and they really want to give back. That's something we're finding from this generation of students is they want to help and they really want to, they really do want to give back. If a student and the school decides they do want to do the fundraising side of this, they have the opportunity to earn school givebacks. So whether that's US Games certificates, which is a PE equipment company, a lot of your schools right here in the elementary have PE closets full of free PE equipment that they've earned through this program. You might be wondering, well, why don't we just buy new free, new PE equipment for our schools? Why are we going through the American Heart Association to do that? Um, and on that first page there, I wanted to provide to you guys all of the things that we do at the American Heart Association and specifically in Iowa. We're a nationally known organization, so we get questions a lot like, so what are you doing here in Iowa? And how are our kids making an impact here in Iowa? And when our families support you, how does that support us here locally? And a huge thing that we do here in Iowa is that we're changing and adapting with the policies and system changes with whether it has to do with tobacco and nicotine use, our vaping epidemic, which is getting out of hand. We have a side of the AHA that goes after policies and tries to put things in place so that we can have these things less accessible to students. And in our job here in the school level and my role is, is to make sure students know the dangers behind that and the effects of that and how it impacts our heart. Um, so there's many areas you can kind of look through on that page that, you know, the things that we do, it goes to advocacy, it goes to research and education and being able to provide all of these, these things to schools as well. We work with US Games as a company who gives back to the schools. And so working with us, this company helps us give back to the schools, kind of in a roundabout way. Um, I won't go on every, I won't go over everything on here, but as you can kind of see, there's a lot more to this program than, you know, what used to be just known as Jump Rope for Heart. So I kind of just wanted to get in here tonight and explain to you kind of what this program entails. Um, students also gain access to Learn Hands Only CPR. They're not certified in it as elementary kids when they go on there and, and get those resources, but they can sit down with their family at home, whether it's on the app or through our website when they register, and learn the skills of Hands Only CPR. And we know that that's a life-saving skill that eventually they're going to need to graduate in high school, from high school. And so being able to introduce that, them to that at a young age is very important to us and our life-saving mission as well. And then I also just provided one of the fun little resources. That's just example of the dozens of resources that students and families and teachers can get doing our program. So it's kind of making heart-healthy learning fun, whether it's in the classroom or in the gym. Um, my favorite part of working with the Waterloo School District is working with the staff at every school that I have so far. Um, I've been very impressed from the principal and the school counselors and the PE teachers and how they work together. That's been really important. Um, so using Highland Elementary School as an example, you know, I started with the PE teacher that I got to know and then the principal got looped in and the instructional coach and the art teacher and everybody just kind of working together as a part of this program and not seeing it just as something that's in the gym. And so we really hope to get all of the schools, all of the elementary schools in the district on board. Um, and we have some really cool incentives that I'm, I'm hoping to work with the schools on individual basis. So when we get all of them on board to meet 100%, the American Heart Association wants to, excuse me, when they complete the program, we're going to give the district elementary PE department $500 in return for their efforts and what they do to support us over the years to do some, you know, give back whether, whatever they need for their PE program district-wide. So we're pretty excited for that opportunity. Um, and then we also have some individual rewards and incentives for those people who coordinate it at the schools, too. So we really appreciate the support of the board. Um, and I just wanted to open it back up to you guys for questions and what you have for me.
Well, I was just wondering why you have seven of our 11 elementary. Is there specific reasons why the other four haven't jumped on board or just have you heard?
Sure. So, and sometimes it might be, so last year it was just like at Kittrell Elementary, for example, we had a change in the PE teacher. So it kind of was a, a lost year for us. We kind of lost in translation, so hopefully we can get them back next year and be back on board with them. Um, and as far as the other schools go, I'm kind of working with those principals and figuring out, you know, if it's too much to put on that PE teacher or that one person, how can we figure out how we can get more people on board to make it, you know, more of a team effort rather than put on one person's shoulders? So I think that's kind of been the struggle is just figuring out, well, this can't just be on one person. So kind of trying to open the doors back up, but if I could ask you guys for your support and getting all on board. For me personally, it's been really important, especially in our larger school districts that I'm in, just like Cedar Rapids, is being able to provide all of the students with the same opportunity to participate, you know, fundraising aside. And so I, I look at you guys similar to Iowa City in that you have different diversities, socioeconomic statuses and all sorts of things, but how can we let every student have the same access to this awesome program, the resources?
I think it's super. That's why I'd like to, you know, get all the schools. It'd be super.
I wanted to thank you for the CPR piece. Um, there's a, a child in, that I know who had to administer CPR to her mother and she's, she was 13 at the time. So just having those skills for every child, it's what saved her. So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's like hearing stories like that, like that's part of my job every day is hearing, hearing those things and what we do and what you guys help support is allowing these kids to learn. So thank you very much for sharing that.
Do you know if, I know nationally they are trying to work with farmers to find alternate crops to grow. As you, a lot of work on nicotine, but you know, there's still a pretty good farm base for tobacco in some states. Or is there an effort to try to find crops for those farmers to grow instead?
Sure. That is a great question and something that, that is not what I do every day, but I can certainly find out more to get that information to you. Not in my expertise. Um, and actually from just starting to work at the Heart Association about four years ago, we do a lot more than I even thought. So I'm more on that youth market side and I also oversee the Cedar Valley Heart Walk coming up in a couple weeks. Um, but as far as that policy side and all those things we're doing as far as food access and crops and things like that, can absolutely work with someone to get you that information.
Okay. Just curious.
It's a great question.
Thank you for what you do.
So our Heart Walk is the 21st, right?
It is on August 20th.
August 20th?
Yes. So it is next Saturday and this, the Waterloo Community School District does have a walk team. So if anybody wants to sign up for that team.
Okay.
We have a few PE teachers that are kind of championing that. They're doing great, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I will continue to stay in touch with you all about our other schools and hopefully we can get them on 100% completion rate. So thank you very guys, thank you very much for what you guys do. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. So is there anyone, before I read my caveat, anyone here that would like to address the board tonight on any item? Okay, well, thank you. We will move right past that at this point. The next agenda item is our consent agenda. And tonight it has a lot of items. And I will read first what they are. Yes. Item D is the minutes of the July 11th and July 13th special board meetings. Item E is the personnel appointments and adjustments. Item F is bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item G is the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa donation to West High School. Item H is the Sunshine Charitable Foundation donation to West High School. Item I is Leader in Me Agreement. Item J is the 28E Agreement between Waterloo Career Center and Union Community School District. Item K is an appointment of the board member to the UEN Steering Committee. Item L is the bid approval for the East High School East Parking Lot. And item M is the Central Middle School Remodel Waterloo Career Center Expansion Project Change Order Number Six. Are there any items that board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
I think it was L that I, yeah, L.
Item L. Okay. Is that all? India, you good? Okay, so could I have a motion to accept all of the consent, consent agenda items except item L?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried four zero. Yeah, Indy's out, so she didn't. Okay. And so now we will move on to item L, which is the bid approval for the East High School Parking Lot. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from ISG Architects and approve the East High School East Parking Lot project bid to failure hurly construction as presented at a cost of $433,200 plus $120 square yard for the HMA patching.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion.
Um, I would just appreciate if Michael and maybe some of the facilities committee members and, I don't know if Zach's here, but just kind of walk through it so that I understand exactly what, like why we only had one bid and the difference in the price tags.
Yeah, and I motion for Zach and he's the one that's done all the work on this, so.
Thank you.
And we do have Tyler from ISG here as well.
And Kate is back there. Oh, that's right.
Um, yeah. The, the answer to the one bid probably has more to do with the bidding climate we're seeing right now. You know, a year ago, we were seeing multiple bids, lots of competition, lots of, you know, COVID affecting it. I would say that it hit the vertical side first and now we're seeing it more on the horizontal side where we're seeing construction prices increase due to labor shortages, material shortages, et cetera. That would be our explanation of the one bid.
So that's pretty across the board, like everywhere?
Yeah, there was an article in Courier last week about the same thing happening on a couple, like three of Cedar Falls' last four projects they bid have been 25% over.
And I will say that if we wait another year or spring to go out for bid again, it's hard to tell what prices will be at that time.
Of course. And the completion date is November 22nd of 2022. Will that be a lot of problems for the student parking and athletic events and stuff?
No, we've, we'll work around their schedule. We did make that clear to, at the pre-bid with failure hurly, that we would just have to coordinate together. We would phase the overlay, so there would still be parking available to students and staff.
The phasing was pretty strict. I think what we say, half the parking lots, all they can close at once. And then it can't be like, obviously one of the entrances has to be open. And then for the stairs and stuff, we tried to time it so there was only a couple athletic events interrupted, not the whole season.
Yeah, and those, that stairs would include an ADA ramp to get up to code on that as well.
And if we have bad weather, how far could it potentially go back? Guess.
I would say that they're not opening up a lot of dirt, so the rain and stuff shouldn't affect it. I mean, unless it rained for a month straight or something. But crazier things have happened, but I think the biggest thing we'll see on the schedule-wise would be material delays. I know they've said that lighting is probably going to be tight. The trash enclosure also could have some lead time. But that again, that, the one we specified just bolts onto the pavement, so that could really be installed whenever it comes.
And the other big thing to this, too, is the security lighting that we'll be adding to the parking lot. It's, right now, it's just perimeter building lighting. Um, it's, right now, it's just brim, perimeter building lighting right now. So having parking lots towards the east more will be a big benefit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's five lights, I believe.
And was it unusual? Did you get, what, do you feel it's pretty typical right now that you only got one bid?
Yeah, I could see that across the board.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure I understood it all, but thank you.
Any other questions or comments from facilities?
I think just a, a review of what the board has done over the last few years about opening bids and having a situation like this of one. Um, and that was, uh, a concern. Um, two or three years ago, we kind of made that stipulation of saying, we need to think of that carefully if we only get one. Um, but the board has options with that of saying, um, as Zach brought up, if we just refused all bids because there's only one and we have no idea what we're, what's facing us in a year. So the other part of it that's a safety net is yes, you can open one, but if it seems unreasonable, the board can just refuse it and start over. So it's really, you're not, um, required to accept one bid if that's all that there is. So they're safe on either direction. Um, and that's something that we discussed before this project bid opening, just so the people that were attending knowing what options we had and not to feel kind of trapped, so.
Well, if you guys feel good about it, I feel good about it, so thank you.
Well, and I think, Michael, when we went to that, because obviously we like competitive bids, you know, you're going to probably get a better dollar if you have competitive bids. But the climate has definitely changed and, and, you know, a lot of companies don't want to do a small project like this. So I'm glad that, you know, we got a bid, you know, sometimes you don't even get a bid, so. Yeah. Okay, are we all good?
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
And India is returned, okay? Okay, the next, the next item on our agenda is item N. And that is, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Waterloo Schools and the P D S Methods Block, University of Northern Iowa, as presented. And. Yeah, Jen, Jen Hartman is here to discuss.
Good evening, everyone. How are you tonight?
Great.
Good.
Good. Um, I just wanted to share this plan with you. Uh, we have been fortunate to be in a partnership with U N I for the last couple of years, right around the time that COVID started, um, with Irving as one of our professional development schools. Um, and then it's grown into Cunningham has hosted a semester, Pointer has hosted a semester, and now we're adding Highland. Um, and what the premise is, is that U N I has a professional development school. So rather than teacher candidates going through their methods classes, so science, literacy, math and so forth, um, on campus and hearing about theory and pedagogy, but really not having that experience until they get into their level twos and threes. This allows them the opportunity to take those classes from their U N I professors on our campus. And then the students, the U N I students stay, um, on our campus and they're actually in the classrooms for at least half a day, every day of the week for a whole semester. So it really gives them almost like a pre-student teaching experience. Um, we allow them to go into any of our classrooms. Uh, the principals work together closely with U N I. And, um, so it's a win-win for us in the, in the aspect of we help develop those teacher candidates. Um, we give them a glimpse into what public schools really do. Um, oftentimes, you know, we, we remember back in our college days, a lot of it is theory and a lot of it is not that, um, general practice. And so they get opportunities to sit in our P L Cs. They get to really look at the assessments that we give kids and how we carry out our, our resources. So that's a great benefit for us. But then it also benefits us, especially in shortages for teachers as we're seeing. Um, we can start recruiting immediately. So as soon as the U N I students start back in August and they start coming to Highland, we'll be able to say, huh, you know, those, those several kids we really would love to have in our district and start to recruit, um, for even second semester as full-time teachers. So, um, it's a great opportunity for, for us and U N I. So I just wanted to share that it's not a new, new-ish program, um, but we've never officially had a memorandum of understanding.
Have you recruited, I mean, has, has it played out that we've been able to?
It has played out in numerous circumstances.
Thank you.
It's been wonderful.
Thank you for doing this. The more that teacher students do, the better teachers they're going to be. The more they try, the more they get out there. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. And it's really helped us to showcase Waterloo. We have many kids at U N I that come from really small rural towns. They've not had a lot of diverse experiences. Um, and we've heard time and again, oh, my goodness, had I known this was available and that I really thrive, um, in a diverse setting, I want to be in Waterloo. And so we've been able to really grab great, great people.
Good deal.
Great.
Do you have a quick question?
Uh-huh, go ahead.
A question, um, I always wondered why they never go to like middle school or high school? Why are you elementary? Not to say it's a problem, I just would curious.
I, I don't know, India, I can't answer that. I know that, um, the P D S model has been around for a couple of years, both in Cedar Falls and Waterloo. Um, and I've known it strictly as an elementary setting. So I don't know if it's just different folks at U N I that are really pushing that or if it's something that will eventually go to the secondary schools.
Okay, thank you.
And we have been starting conversations to bring it to at least one of our middle schools. So we are working on, working our way up so we can get kids from elementary, middle and high.
Hi, thank you, Debbie.
Okay, any other questions for Jen? Okay, we need to get that motion on the table, please.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried five zero. Thank you very much, Jen.
Thank you for your work, Jen.
The next item on our agenda is the technology purchase. And we do have Mr. Matt O'Brien coming up and we'll get the motion on the table here. If I can get my cursor to move here, why won't my cursor move? Come on, there it goes, sorry. It is, it's the, it is the technology right now. I'm going to the old paper because it's not going. I did. Yes, there, geez, see, but it won't.
Matt, I think you need to come help.
This?
No?
No, see, it's not, I'm going here, I'm sorry. Matt, it is the problem, but I'm, I won't blame you. Okay, here we go. Okay, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 409 HP times 360 11 G4 Chromebooks from C D W G at a total cost of $190,594.
Some move, second.
And Mr. Technology Expert, Matt O'Brien.
Well, hey, thanks for not blaming me. Usually I get the blame for any technology that doesn't work, so appreciate the pass. Um, we have been piloting two-in-one Chromebooks, uh, for this past, part of this past school year at two of our elementary schools. Um, and if you're not familiar with the two-in-one Chromebook, it's basically a touchscreen Chromebook that also has a 360 spin. So then it can also be used as basically a, a tablet, so it can be used in either mode. Um, the feedback from teachers at those schools has, at those two elementary schools has been very positive. Uh, they've been used for capturing student artifacts, for running records. Uh, teachers have enjoyed having another device that, um, use. I, I love giving teachers devices because they often will think of uses that maybe weren't even originally imagined when, uh, we first looked at this. So we've had teachers that have used them kind of like as a tent. So if they're in a small group setting, they've got like a little mini touchscreen device for their small groups, uh, et cetera. So they've, they've had really good feedback, uh, thus far. So the proposal in front of you tonight is to expand to the other nine elementary schools with these devices. It's actually, this is one generation older. It's just the new generation of this device that I held up. Um, the other part of this is that we have applied for and received a funding commitment for emergency connectivity funds, E C F funds, which some of our board members may remember that we have applied for E C F funds in the past to help us fund student internet access. Um, they also helped fund, uh, our virtual student Chromebooks this past year as well. Um, so there was actually a third round of E C F, uh, which I was able to apply for. And we were actually really excited to be one of the districts. Uh, apparently they had quite a bit more in this round of funding requests and they actually had money available. Um, but we were able to be one of the districts that received a funding commitment. So, um, E C F will end up reimbursing the majority of this purchase. You can see in the board document that there is still a, a portion of the cost, uh, estimated portion that we would still pay as a school district. But, uh, the majority of the costs, uh, in the exhibit before you would be reimbursed through E C F.
Are these buildings, you're rotating out through their buildings? Are there devices that are coming out, all on schedule come out or is some of them out early?
So this is actually a little different from most of the proposals that I've taken before you because most of the proposals truly are replacements. This is actually an additional device for teachers. So they still have their laptops. This is an additional device that the teachers would receive.
And, and all the teachers seem to really, really like them.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I would always hesitate to say all, but I would say the majority of, the majority of feedback was very positive from, from the two schools. Uh, in fact, one of the schools, uh, started off with a smaller pilot and then by the end of the year had enough, um, po- positive feedback from their teachers that it was pushed at the building level, hey, we really want to expand these to all of our teachers, so. Um, and they actually had some, some special dollars that they were able to use for that at that time. So I think that was a good testament, um, when, you know, when the building is the, the principal and the staff within the school are the ones pushing it, that, that speaks to, um, it being a, a successful program.
I assume you have a plan for the, the, the devices being brought back to the district then? From the classrooms, from the teachers? You have a plan for the existing, the existing devices or this is in addition to their?
These truly are in addition to.
Okay, so they'll have two devices per, okay.
Yep, so elementary teachers then would actually have their standard laptop that we issue all teachers plus, uh, one of these devices, yep.
Because there are things that you can't really do in a Chromebook completely as a teacher, right? I mean, there's things that you still need to.
I would say that the list of things that you need a Windows computer for as opposed to a Chromebook is dwindling as more and more things are becoming cloud-based. We're not, we're not there yet. There have been some districts that have taken the leap to just go Chrome across the board, uh, including teacher devices. We're not there yet. Active Inspire is still, uh, which is the kind of flip chart software, the older flip chart software that a lot of our previous curriculum was, uh, based in, um, like presentation, curriculum presentations for, for classes, lessons, that type of thing. Um, that's a Windows-only program as we're rotating in the new active panels that can run on their own, that don't require the computer to run. Um, teachers are, are in the process of kind of updating those flip charts into more, I guess I'll say, a, a modern platform. Active Inspire is a little older, but until we give teachers a, a, a chance, and, and that was one of the reasons why we stuck with Promethean is to make sure we're not pushing the teachers away from that. We want to give teachers plenty of time to make those adaptations. So that's probably the biggest thing right now, um, why we haven't taken the leap just to Chrome only. And I, I would say that, you know, we're not close. That's maybe a com, a medium-term conversation, but not a short-term conversation.
Thank you.
You bet.
And thank you for applying for those dollars again. That's super because then this is typically how we run that through. Then we pay the full amount and then we get the check back and it's just deposited in that account.
Yep, with, with the E C F program, it's a reimbursement program, so.
That's great, though. All those books for 27,000, you know, the, the computers, it's super. Thank you for your initiative to get this because that's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. The next item on our agenda this evening is item P. And this is the Athletic Training Services Agreement. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the amended and extended Athletic Training Services Agreement for the listed four school years.
Some move.
Thank you, and we have Mr. Huff here to, um, explain and answer our questions.
Well, thanks for considering this. I think it's very important to our athletic teams and coaches and most importantly, our student athletes. Um, this contract was set to go another year. Um, we were looking at upping the hours per week. Right now, our trainers at East and West are contracted for 25 hours a week. And it's just not enough when we take into the consideration of the many teams that practice at different times in the evening and so forth. So some of our practices aren't covered. Um, we've checked around. Cedar Falls, for example, uses the same group and they're at 30 hours. The schools in Cedar Rapids have, uh, almost a full-time person that's employed by the district at each, each of their schools, as does Iowa City. So we wanted to move up. That's why we didn't wait, we didn't want to wait till the end of the contract. So we asked them to, to give us a opportunity and what they would do for that. Um, their hourly rate has not changed. Uh, the, the difference in, from one, uh, contract to the next, I think was about $12,000 and that's just because of another extra, um, hours at each school. So, um, and then what was nice about it is they locked us in at the same price that we're going to play next year for the next three years after that. So with inflation going, um, they've done a good job. Cedar Valley Medical Specialist, they've been with Waterloo schools for about 19 years. And, and they take good care of us and they've always find quality applicants. So we're excited about the opportunity to get a little bit more coverage for our high school athletes.
Does it work with, um, like when they travel to games? Um, I assume they don't come along, but does a heat school have their own trainer at their destination when they have games outside of Waterloo?
Our football, they usually travel to all the football games. And the other, like basketball and stuff, if we're hosting other teams, our trainer will assist any of their players and, and kind of vice versa when we travel. But football, they travel.
Thank you.
You bet, great question.
Yeah, somebody's probably, you know, looking at increase. We'll have three more teams, well, technically five more teams next, next this school year.
Yep.
With free east field and cross-country and.
You bet.
Two cross-country teams and soccer and then two, two women's wrestling, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Have we all, uh, you said, you know, 19 years. Is there anyone else that could provide this kind of service? I'm always just.
There are, I think, I think probably in this area, there's an outfit called Athletico that does some training at different sites. Um, we've always been very, very happy with, uh, Cedar Valley Medical Specialists and they've done a great job for us. So I guess that's why we've, uh, you know, recommended to stick with them.
I just wondered if this is like competitive, like what other districts about our size pay for their athletic training?
Um, I don't know for sure. I'm almost certain, though, it's very competitive.
Okay.
But I couldn't promise you one.
Yeah.
Group over the other.
Okay. And then are they at all the practices too, you said?
Pretty much. You know, they're, they're, that's why the extra five hours is really going to help for some of those practices that are in the evening. It gives us, instead of 25 hours, they got 30 hours to be around the athletics. And as a coach, it's really nice to be able to say, you know, we've got somebody, go have them take a look at it versus, well, I think you're okay, you know, can it move? Yep, you're good. No, let's, let's get it really checked out. It's been a very, you know, probably any company do the same, but we, these, we've had very good people. Um, and they get a lot of people from U N I. It's, it's been a little trickier because you and I used to have an undergraduate training program and they don't have that anymore. It's all masters, so finding people is, there's a little more competition.
I think they, in the past, they've been good supporters back to the district as well.
Absolutely.
They, they, it seems like they've sponsored a lot of posters and different things over the years. We've seen their names on there, so.
Yeah, definitely.
I think they give back to us too, what we're giving in, so.
Do we work with them at all through any of our W C C stuff? Do you know?
Great question, Stacey.
What was the question?
I just said, I, I wondered if they worked with us in any of our W C C. I just said, I wondered if they worked with us in any of our WCC stuff.
Like, teach class, or, I don't know, I haven't, that's a good question. I don't know.
Good job, question moved.
Cedar Valley Medical Specialist does, but I'm not sure specifically with the athletic training, but I can check it out with Jeff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do recall that they've donated to the Career Center in some capacity.
Because we don't have a specific athletic training, so it might be nursing or CNA.
That's what I meant. Yeah, just, I like supporting entity that is so involved in the community and, you know.
May as well plan to get more, more applicants for them. We have a, so he's first interested in Career Center.
Just one comment. In the smaller districts, it's very hard to find trainers at this time. So the fact that I saw that we're lock, locking it in through twenty-six, it was like music to my ears. It was like great to see, because I'm like, I mean, just like any profession out there, the trainers have been very difficult to find. And we're not talking small districts. We're talking the WAMAC district, which is 3A. Some of your bigger 3As can't find trainers at this time, so we're very fortunate, in my mind, to have the support that we have at those different events. So just wanted to throw that in there.
And, and one of the, you know, their, their leadership gentleman named Gil, but Dave Fricki, he's been working with West Waterloo and, and Waterloo schools, not just Wa, I mean, he's, if we need him, he's, he's there. I mean, he's, it's been a great benefit, and he takes really good care of, of Waterloo schools.
Okay, are we all in favor? Please state aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carried five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
The next item on our agenda is Exhibit Q, and that is that the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from the Facilities Committee and approve the purchase of pre-K playground equipment for Pointer Elementary School at a cost of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars as presented. And we have Zach Kelly
So moved.
Coming forward in a second.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with the closing of El Coran preschool, they've moved kids around to Lowell Elementary and Kitterell Annex and Pointer Elementary. Pointer Elementary is going to have two classrooms for pre-K. The classrooms are pre-K appropriate, but the building does not have pre-K playground equipment. That's kind of the standard for the Waterloo district to provide that. There's no other building that doesn't have that for pre-K. We use Bolin Recreation with Miracle Playground Equipment for the district, just because it provides an excellent warranty and service. Currently, the lead time for this playground equipment is thirty weeks. So we're looking to have this done probably in the summertime. And I talked to Jen Hartman and let her know that this is going to happen in the summertime if it was approved by the board. She was okay with that. They would find other activities for the students to do in the meantime. And I do want to say that this equipment is rated for forty-five to fifty-five as far as students goes. The two classrooms total have thirty-two to forty kids. So there is the chance of expanding. Any questions?
No, I think it's great. I mean, they need to have it.
So you're saying next summer?
Correct.
Yeah, next summer.
Yep, is when it would get installed.
And, and we have the pre-K up at Lowell already?
Correct. Yep, that is installed. Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Does Kitterell?
Yeah.
Kitterell does.
By the annex.
Yep.
So will they consider, you like, maybe some purchasing, just some outside things? Stephanie, do you know?
So we've, we've had this before, and so we would purchase scooters and balls and a lot of outside things that they can still do, so they get outside. It just, we wouldn't have the, the age-appropriate equipment yet for them to, to play on.
Do you have a question, India?
Yeah, just just in clarification, that, is this a recommendation or requirement? Because when we taught, you made it sound like a requirement. I just wanted to make sure that I was, when you made it sound like the requirement as for needing for pre-K, I just want to make sure. I'm at, yes, so the recommendation or the required by the federal or state level to have outdoor equipment for pre-K?
Okay.
I can answer. Although it's not a requirement, any of the playground equipment that we have in our buildings isn't appropriate for ages five and under. So we cannot let our, any pre-K kids play on that equipment at all, or reliable. So any, any building that we ever have pre-K there, we make sure we have pre-K appropriate, age-appropriate equipment.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to just to make sure.
No, that's.
Because Pointer was, is an elementary school, so in the past, they have their own for like for K in fifth grade, but for pre-K, obviously, this is the first time being there now. They now have pre-K, so we're adding.
Exactly, that's.
They should not require.
Yep, that's exactly correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Zach or Stephanie? Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is Exhibit R. And this is purchase of vans for the maintenance department. And again, Zach, you can stay right here. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of two twenty-twenty-three Transit Fleet vans at a cost of seventy-five thousand nine hundred eighty dollars from Dick Witham Ford.
So moved. Second.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Zach.
All right. So currently, we have seven vehicles in our fleet that are two thousand nine and older. It's starting to get to that point to where we're going to have to start purchasing new fleets. The two that are picked right now are the, the worst that we have right now as far as cosmetics and suspension. One of them is a passenger van that was converted into a maintenance van. So it's not equipped very well. The payload capacity is twenty-five hundred pounds for that passenger vehicle. A cargo van is forty-five hundred pounds roughly. So you start to notice, once you get shelving in there and equipment and tools, that it, it's stress on the vehicle. So that was one of them. That was a two thousand nine, or sorry, two thousand eight. The other one is a two thousand four. That's getting up there in age as far as city driving. We don't do a lot of highway driving, obviously. So the city driving takes a lot of more toll on the vehicles. So that's where we're at with those vans, are the only ones that I can get pricing on right now. Trucks still, it sounds like October is when they can give us bids for those, but these two vehicles are the ones that I kind of wanted to press right now, is getting, um, it sounds like December is when we would be able to receive the vans if it was approved by the board. And that total price includes the trade-in of these two vans as well.
So it, it has been typical that we have a standing allocation for vehicles for Zach's department, and as he's alluding to, the last two or three years have been almost impossible to deal with that, so things got a little bit behind. So we normally go through two or three or four vehicles even in a year. So to get them as we can, this is just trying to get us back into that rotation of having vehicles rotated when they need to be, and we're a little behind schedule right now.
So should we expect Michael to have, um, have them come forward like in the next four or five years just to catch up, like the computers that we would bring new or get new vehicle?
I think you're going to see this every year for the next four or five years to get us caught up. And then it may go down to two a year, or it just, it just depends on the need and the type of vehicles that are wearing out and what they need to have to have be able to do the jobs they need. You get into pickups and they snowplow, and that's a, that's a hard use for a, for a vehicle like that. So it's, it's just managing a fleet. So that's what we try to keep ahead of a little bit.
Are our tractors holding up?
What was that, Jesse?
Are our tractors holding up? Don't ask.
I still didn't quite hear you. I couldn't quite hear him.
I said, I said, how are tractors holding up?
Oh, how are tractors holding up?
Yeah.
They're holding up, um, good. We've got
Okay.
a couple minor issues, but.
I said, bigger expense, that's why I asked, so. I did have just a curiosity question here, uh, to them. I should have asked you ahead of time, so my apologies.
No, that's okay.
Do we do a lot of trailer hauling with these vans? I just see they're equipped with trailer brakes and tow packages. Did we do much with that?
We do, but it's not a whole lot. If it's more of the scissor lift that we haul around.
Okay, yeah.
It's minimal. It's not an everyday.
Okay, but still, but you're hauling, so it's needed, so, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
And do we have, did, did they come with a warranty? I didn't see it in there, but maybe I missed it.
Yeah, it's a three-year warranty, um, or a thirty-six hundred, or thirty-six thousand.
Warranty, yeah.
Standard, yeah.
Okay.
And then the powertrain is five-year.
Okay, good on the powertrain.
Sixty thousand, yep.
Any other questions, India?
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay, and was, I, it just, that looks like fifteen hundred dollars for that O four. That's like, you could part it out for that.
Uh, that was, that was the Bill Caldwell Ford one. Yeah, the one from Dick Witham was thirty-four hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, scrap is.
Yeah, my husband does that. He, I mean, yeah, I know a lot about getting metal. But anyway, okay, any, we're all, all in favor of accepting the two new vans?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carried five zero. Well, thank you very much, Zach, for your patience. Okay, now we have Exhibit S, and this will be Michael as our expert, and the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the quote recommended by the District Insurance Committee to participate in the IASB Safety Group Plan with a total estimated premium of two million nineteen thousand six hundred ninety dollars as presented.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, and discussion.
Okay, we are into August, and this is a plan that backdates to July one. And it has not been unusual that we're a little behind schedule to get rates, because nobody wants to give their final rate until the last minute in different areas. And as we've been illustrating tonight, the last one that we were waiting for was cybercrime. Because it's such a hot issue. It's such something that everybody deals with. And I will tell you that EMC uses the, I'm trying to think of the, the model that Waterloo uses and Mr. O'Brien's impact on all of this as their standard. So he works with them. He, you can imagine all the questions that he goes through in the technical levels of trying to deal with all of this. And it's one of those things that most of the things that come through, we never see as any kind of a threat, because those things are in place. But it happens all the time. It's just like the junk emails all of us get. Can you imagine what comes through a network system for a place like a, a school, a major school district? So all of the other rates were ready about mid-June, but we were waiting for that, and I wanted a complete package before we brought it to the board, because it did go back to July one. We have an active insurance committee that keeps their finger on the pulse of this all year long. And just as we've heard in other cases, the amount of changes that are coming with prices going up, risk going up, and our trends is driving prices up. And I think you remember, as I've talked about, property tax rates, that this premium comes out of the management fund. So we have been bulking up a, a little the last two or three years to make sure that we were ready for major changes. But I did give you on page seventy-three is just a breakdown over the last three years. So it's really two types of insurance. The top number of lines that are there is property and liability. So insuring our, our property for damage, storms, and then it's any kind of issues that we may get into just with employees or liability from parents or students making a case that the school isn't safe or something on that regard. So that's what we're being insured against on the, in the top part. And when you see kind of halfway down that list umbrella, the way that they have, I'm trying to condense this, it gives us about an hour and a half presentation of explaining what insurance coverage is. But the way EMC has structured, and EMC has been around a long time, and they build school coverage for school desires. So it's like a custom-made insurance for schools. That's why it's hard for anyone else to break into that market, because they really do a, a great job of, of following the needs that schools have. So it's not something we just look at when we get close to renewal. It's something that's going on. We are supported by our local EMC company, which is PDCM and Chris Faraday's team, and it's not just here's the rates and thank you, and we'll see you again in a year. I know from the property liability, we have quarterly meetings that they come in and talk to us. And I believe on the HR side with workers' comp, which is the other side of the insurance, it's a monthly meeting. It's a review of what cases we have, how do we deal with it, encourage people to get back to work, those kind of things. So it's a, it's a living scheduled contact with the company to deal with the needs that we have. So when you look at that price comparison, the property liability insurance from last year has gone up sixteen percent, and their standard model was twenty. That they were going to raise everybody twenty percent just because of cost of materials, cost of risk, cost of liability, and just imagine what the duration did to their claims and history over the last couple of years through central Iowa, so tornadoes. uh, history over the last couple of years through central Iowa, so tornado season and all those things. So they have they have to, uh, keep aware of all of those things. Um, I will say as I'm thinking of it, that this is a program that we get dividends from if our, our experience is good. So there is, uh, some payback in that when we have a, a good year.
Does that come back to us, or does it just get applied to the?
We get a check.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So the property liability, um, is going up sixteen percent for uh, lots of different rea-, one of the main reasons is just putting a higher value, dollar value on the assets themselves of saying, what does it really cost to replace a building? Uh, when you add labor and the price of materials where we're at right now, that's going to drive everything up. So it's all understandable. Um, and we have, if, um, I don't know if I had that part in as part of the backup sheets, is that even raising our deductible can save money off of that. Um, so yes, you are taking some of a risk of saying, we'll take a little more risk and pay a little more deductible if it happens. Um, and we've done that, um, almost on an annual basis since I've been here of just saying, how do we, how do we look at this and get the best coverage for what we need? And we can afford, rather than just buying top-of-the-line and low deductibles and so forth. It's just like a health insurance comparison, how you have to do that. Um, the other part with workers' comp, um, is we've, uh, our experience, I know a year ago was an eight percent increase and we're up to nineteen percent right now. And the difficult part of that, and before I get to that, I'm just going to take you through the pages. You can just see from the charts on seventy-four that the trends that they're looking at for value and what a building should be insured at is going up in these years as we talked about. And all lines of commercial property on seventy-five, it's falling into that on a pretty evident, obvious trend increase. So we're facing that. And then we get into, um, workers' comp on seventy-seven. And when you look at that, you go, well, it looks like our rate numbers went down a little bit, and they did. Uh, which is pretty minor, but the, the, um, the biggest factor is the bottom note. What is our experience mod? And that's, that's a long discussion in itself. Basically, what it means is if you are average with everyone, and I'm sure Anthony can tweak this explanation a little bit if we think we need to, you want to stay at one. That's the average of everybody. You're not getting a bump on your rates if you stay within one. We've had a couple of years since I've been here that we were point nine or point eight. We had really good years. And that drew the rates down. But because of the experience, and if you look on page seventy-eight, you can see that twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, we had a jump in cases and dollar amounts. And when they look at workers' comp rates to calculate trends, they take three years. It's a group of three years. So what we're dealing with right now is the three years from two thousand eighteen, nineteen to two thousand twenty, twenty-one. So a year from now, that high year of eighteen, nineteen is going to drop off. But we might have a similar year for twenty-one, twenty-two. But what is different about twenty-one, twenty-two is when you look at that, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand is paid claims and six hundred and eighty-five is reserve, just in case this turns out worse than they expect. They, they withhold a value in their calculation to say, this was a serious injury. We haven't paid this out yet. But there's a possibility we could. So until that plays out, that number stays high, and that's one of the, that's one of the monthly review meetings that PDCM comes in and works with Anthony's staff of saying, okay, where are we at with these difficult cases? Are they getting their care? Are they getting better? Are they, when do you think they could come back to work? Those kind of things. And they're always promoting easing back on that reserve. So we don't carry just a high year of, maybe we'll have to pay this. But it has to play out in a, in a reasonable fashion because you, you have to understand any staff member that gets hurt, you have to have the empathy that it's me. You know, you can't push somebody through because they need to get back to work because it's costing us money. That isn't what our insurance is for. It's to protect the employee. But we have to work with them to say, don't stretch it out longer than you need to either. So there's that balance of, um, the care for the injuries. So we do have that right now, that trend because of some of these.
Do we do very much analysis on, you know, bucketing what are the injuries that are in things that we may could do a better job preventing?
We do that all the time.
Uh, because I haven't actually ever seen that data, so I'm just kind of curious. Like, like, would be something like a facility update could address or something, or is it more?
I mean, the program is in, the program is in place. So when you look at, you know, where do our injuries come from? They are the, the jobs where people are physical. You know you're going to have cooks that get cut or burned or lifting a pot too much and back and custodians can be anything and everything on any given day. So those kind of occupations, we have all of the, um, training and checking on how we hire people and why we let them come back to work. Are they able to do that? And there's some pretty tough decisions on those sometimes because if you bring somebody back too early and they re-injure, then it's a tough one. So, but we have all the training of occupational physicals and whatever when those people are hired and then, I know the, uh, I just had a question from a salesman not long ago about, well, are all of those people wearing their special shoes? So I had to ask, yeah, they've been doing that for years. So, you know, it's, it's your, um, how does your back feel when, you know, when you're doing your job and all of that? Um, but the other part that comes into this as well is the physical and mental well-being of stress. You know, and COVID issues and that came with all of that. So you can imagine how many issues they deal with, with eighteen hundred employees. So it is not a surprise, and we've been hanging pretty close to not having high increases from year to year. I think in the whole time I've been here, it's been around a million and a half dollars. And it's gotten up to a million eight a year ago, if I remember the number. And now for the first time, we went over two million. But in the environment that we're in and all the things that are going on, it's not a surprise. I was expecting this two years ago, and that's why we started putting more money in the management fund. But if, if there are concerns, if there's things you want to know about, uh, Chris Faraday would love to come in and do a workshop with the board, answer every question you have uh, and deal, that's what he does. But.
If I could be honest, just see a parade of like, what buckets, and what's their general buckets of, you know, at what percentage of really is going into, say, like you said, mental health, like, how many are, you know, falls versus, you know, sprains and, and those type of things that would, you know, is there some trends there that we can prove ourselves on just by putting a little bit of, you know, brain power on it? You know, some different set of eyes maybe, you know? Or do we, you know, maybe see something there? Somebody else had another, I viewed that and we can see something to offset it.
Yeah, it's always, it's always under good review.
I had a meeting with Chris last week, uh, maybe Thursday, Chris and Cory in my office, just to kind of get an introduction to him and some of our, um, the staff over there that work with work comp, and that was one thing he talked about is the data they look at and the different things they do to target different issues when they see injuries increasing in different areas.
Does the clinic help any as far as can we do work comp claims at the clinic or not? The district clinic, you can't. Would there be any way of incorporating that? That would have to save money.
I, you know what? I'm not sure. I don't think that we could because that clinic is ours. And I'm wondering if that could be looked at as a conflict of interest when our employees are going there to get their injuries for work looked at.
By Unity Point, correct?
Right.
So I just wondered, I just thought that might be interesting.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, if I had to guess one way or the other, I would, I would probably guess no, but certainly worth asking.
And, and where does, like, if a student gets injured at school, what category do they fall under?
If there's a liability by the district, so it would be either a general liability or a professional liability. You know, if they just fall on the playground because they tripped over something, it may not be that the district was negligent in having a safe area. But if there's something that's not in good shape and they fall off, you know, that's, that's always the case of saying that's when the district becomes liable. You know, if somebody just trips and falls, that's not just because it happens on school grounds.
So that's why our little ones don't go on the big playground or something.
Yeah.
Um, this whole, I, outside of everybody else, I'll have you explain to me like what the reserve is and why it stayed that way. I, I don't.
Well, that's just the current year. Um, so the injury is recent.
So these account for injuries, right?
These are based on actual cases that we already have and say, what's the seriousness of that injury and could there be additional cost from the initial treatment? Well, maybe, let's just say it's a back injury and well, we don't know if they're going to heal well for this year or next year or, you know, it's just therapy. How does, how do all those things work out? So every case is its own study. Um, so when they are, when the insurance company is setting that up, you know, they've got standards of this kind of injury, we've got these kind of risks. So we have to build that in just in case that comes through in this, in this one.
So if this isn't all used then, does, does it carry over? With, with that, for those cases, does the money that was designated for them?
Just the bottom, we don't actually pay that.
Right, but I mean.
It's just, they're just using that as a possible trend cost when they calculate. So, um, when you look at the previous years in there, there's hardly any reserve.
Right.
It's all actual cost in there. So time has gone by that they can, uh, make the determination that we think the ca-, we think the, uh, uh, injury is healing, the person's in good shape, and we have a good feeling of when they'll come back to work to settle this. So, um, until that happens, they based on the severity of the injury, they will just set aside, it could cost us this kind of money to take care of that person, then that's all it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, so if it's still, um, a year from now, when we get rates and there's still a high reserve on there because we haven't gotten into a conclusion that we know when this is going to subside, that co-, reserve cost estimate will be part of the trend that they review to make the new rates.
Is it unusual that the paid claim is as low as it was this year? I mean, were we doing things right or? Or is it just because we don't know the outcomes of so many others? Okay. Got it, kind of.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
It's a timing and it's, it's every individual case has got its own.
Nuance.
Yep, nuances.
And can you just explain how an umbrella policy works for, like, a school district?
Yeah, I was going to mention that, that of course, all of our buildings are insured for their value. But imagine the duration or tornado coming through and we have extensive damage on three buildings. Well, trying to cover all of that with just their own policy probably won't make it under the new costs and labor and whatever. So they put on top an umbrella policy that can be moved into any situation for damages and say, okay, we're going to take part of that three million dollars and say, or whatever the, the umbrella number is, that doesn't sound very high. So it, so that it can be used as a buffer if there's a, a large claim.
So, I'm just a side side, you've been interested, we've had this come a couple of times, say, you know, you were talking about our cyber liability. Are, are we comfortable with that dollar amount looking at some of our neighbor districts that went through a late?
Well, this is the cost of the premium right now. And with whatever develops, and Matt doesn't feel comfortable, he will work with Chris and say, uh, I, I'd feel better if we did this or this or this.
It's, you know, it's interesting, like Cedar Rapids may have had something go on, Limars had a big issue down there and you know, it's interesting that a couple of cities near, you know, school just, near us have been targeted like that, so.
Yeah, there's no guarantees, but, uh, EMC holds Matt in very high regard.
Think that rate will go up next year based on down there?
What's that?
Think that rate will go up?
Well, it's just the trend of what's happening in the world and, you know, every time you hear somebody else gets hit, you know, that just, that just, it's kind of like a sense in the stock market. You know, if there's negative news, oh, the thing goes down. It's not based on reality, it's based on fear. You know, and that's, that's what happens in this market.
So we just know we have faith in Matt. We don't have fear.
Okay, any other questions at all for Michael? So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried five zero. Okay, that is all of our action items. We are going to move on now to the superintendent's report.
All right, I've got five items to cover here. I'm going to go with, I guess, the easier ones to the, maybe the more, uh, questions ones. Uh, admin retreat started today, uh, day one of three, and it went really well. I'm just looking at some of the feedback we got and, uh, it's been a gra-, I think it was a good start to the, to the week. So that's, that's that. Um, we were at the WCC today for that and about eighty, roughly eighty people were there for that, so went well. Uh, opening day, don't forget. I know we've got important dates coming up at, at the very end, but don't forget, opening day is next Thursday at eight-thirty. I believe there's been some communication with you. I, I don't know exactly what, are you guys, oh, okay, all right, cool.
We're there in the front row watching.
Front row, okay, all right. A little anxious for that, but I'm sure it'll go well. So we got, we done some good planning.
Front row, okay, all right. A little anxious for that, but I'm sure it'll go well. So we got, we done some good planning for it, so. So that's next Thursday. Um, staffing conversation. We had a good staffing conversation this afternoon. Two big areas of concern for us, or whatever you wanna say, uh, are special ed at the high school level and then just our elementary class sizes. So today, like I said, we had a good conversation with the high school leadership, high school administrators about special ed staffing and we're trying to be creative as best we can. I, you know, it's, it's difficult. Nobody wants to give up staff. But our numbers, uh, indicate that we may need to do some, some shifting perhaps. We'll see. We're looking at all options. Nothing's been decided yet. But we're gonna come back next one, uh, not next Wednesday, on Wednesday and try to make some decisions on that. So had some good conversation there today on that. Elementary has been another focus. As is always the case, you know, you always get, um, I, I'm, I'm guessing, but I'm pretty certain. Um, certain buildings have larger sections, certain buildings have smaller sections of students. Um, and we're looking at those, uh, Julia has done a great job of keeping us in the loop on those class sizes as enrollment has come in. And we're gonna have a conversation tomorrow with our elementary administration, looking at those numbers and determining, again, uh, it's late in the game. It is what, August eighth? Um, but whether or not we've got the sta- the staff exactly in the right spot, that what's best for students. So again, it's, our intention is to be collaborative and to make, to give, to really empower our administrators to help us with those decisions. Um, so again, that's gonna be tomorrow after our admin retreat. So I don't know, on those, on, anything on, to add on those?
The high school positions, although it's hard to fill, have science and stuff are good?
You know what? I, all, at this point, I know we have district wide about twenty-nine positions that we were unable to fill in terms of at what level there or what areas they're into the high school. I'm not, right off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I'd have to pull that information, but.
In our conversations with high school administrators, like special ed is by far the biggest concern that we have. Um, just, it's been a combination of, uh, of some people who left us last year. Um, just of some shifting and some student needs, some influx of more special ed students. We've got a meeting set up next week with A A to talk about River Hills to see, cause we have some needs there and we're not sure whether or not those are getting met at this point. But again, we're looking forward to that conversation to see what we can do.
Yeah, it looks like about half our secondary openings were in special ed and then one science still out there, two math, and that's anywhere from grades six to twelve.
Anthony, do you know if the West High counselor position was filled?
That I don't know. I don't see it listed as open, so I'm gonna assume it was. No, I said I don't see it listed as an open position right now, so I'm gonna assume it was filled.
Okay, my number four thing here was, uh, COVID updates. I know Stacy emailed me on this and quite honestly, it's been a topic that's come up a few times. So what I did do for you was I forwarded you right before the board meeting started, probably about five minutes before, I did get my hand on the guidance um, that was sent out and, and I was trying to pinpoint a date on one that was given to our new staff. Do you have any, I guess, even on when that was, it was prior to me arriving, obviously. Either one? Okay, sure. So here's kind of, and I'm gonna tell you kind of what my next steps are and then if you have any feedback for me or if you have any other different ideas, let me know. So um, right now, we've got our admins through Wednesday. Wednesday morning is our plan. Our plan is to revisit the gu- the COVID guidance with our administrators. Cause it has been a little while since we've looked at it. Um, you know, I haven't heard, and again, my experience in my previous district was really a lot of collaboration with, down there it was the Tama County Health, uh, here it'd be Blackhawk County Health. Um, I'll be, I'll admit, I need to get back, I need to get in contact with those guys to see, to get, make sure we're in lockstep and make sure we're on, you know, we're following the, the guidance. I haven't heard anything new. Usually when something new comes out that schools have to do, like it's a big, it's a really big deal, meaning like, um, I don't think there's been anything demanded of districts at this point. However, like obviously safety of our students and staff is number one, so. Um, so anyways, we're gonna cover that with our admins Wednesday, bring them up to speed, see what else they need. Um, I'm still learning the structure in terms of like, uh, the relationship, like what that looks like with nursing, the nurses in the buildings, uh, how that, how the identification of students, how, you know, that, that sort of thing works. But kind of going through that on Wednesday, following up with Blackhawk County Health on Friday is my plan. Um, and then, uh, I did have, I'm gonna back up a little bit. Last week I did meet with Andy Patty, who is the superintendent at Cedar Falls and we kind of talked through, it seemed, it sounds like him and Jane did a really good job of, even though at different times they had diff- a little bit different um, responses in the different districts. Uh, he and I were both like, yes, let's try to be as much in lockstep as possible, so it's kind of united front. And I think Jane and Andy did a great job of doing that. Um, but he and I kind of doubled down on that to be in contact and to, um, to work together if something like that came up. So, so I guess, long story short is I, I realize there's, there's been a spike. I realize we just anecdotally and, um, quantitate, quantitatively, um, there's been a, there's been more and more, um, cases that have come up. Uh, as of right now, I don't see any switches at this point. Um, but that doesn't mean I'm open for, I'm always open for feedback and if, you know, if just kind of wait to see. But clearly, you know, as prior to, and we talked to Anthony, prior to the school year starting, I do wanna get something out, just a general statement to staff and families about where we're at with it and kind of our just mindset philosophy.
I think we were high for a few days, but now it's dropped back down to medium. Yeah, so maybe we spike before school started.
Any, any other thoughts or, again, I, I, it was always a good conversation with my previous board about like different perspectives, uh, just hearing feedback, what they're hearing in the community. Have you guys heard anything, any thing you wanna share with me?
I've heard do not go online. That's what I've heard from parents, so.
Don't go online.
Oh, oh, I'm like.
Okay. I think you meant don't read the Facebook post.
And just for information, uh, all staff received a COVID nineteen update on June eighth. That was the last one.
Perfect.
Yeah, I just, I do like the idea, even if we're at mid, to just, just, uh, reiterate the, the policies that we've had, that if, you know, it is our recommendation that if you're sick, please wear a mask, don't, or don't come. But you know, if you, you know, making sure that they know, um, when my family had it, we were still testing positive eight days. So, and I, I've never been that sick my entire life, so, um, and that's just an anecdote as well. But just making sure that, um, that people know that it's still on our radar. It's not like we've said, oh, COVID's done. You know, that it's still something that we're gonna be focusing on and, um, keeping, trying the best we can to keep our people safe and in the buildings. We can't have twenty staff out sick.
Any other thoughts or feedback or?
And I do think, didn't you, who was on like the group? You were on it with Jane and Kingsley and you guys met like every morning with, with the Blackhawk County numbers and, and, um, had like a little COVID meeting every, I think every day. So they did have a real pulse on it and.
The weird thing now though is like, we did our home testing and it's up to people whether they reported or not. So there's a lot of people I know who've had it and they just didn't report it. We, I did mine, but I mean, I've talked to a lot of people and if, if you don't, if you, we have those awesome kits that the government sends. So that's how we tested and it's up to individuals. So the numbers may not be exactly what is happening because it's all based on self-reporting.
Right, but then it could be too that this will be the new normal. You know, going forward, it, it exists. You know, there may be vaccines like the flu. You know, you might have flu shot every year, you know, COVID shot every year. This may be our new normal. You know, so I think people have come to that acceptance too, that, you know, this is a new normal, so this is what we do.
So who will be, um, like our touchstone person? They had been Kingsley. Anthony, will that be your role then?
I'm assuming so.
Okay, thank you.
Good on that for now. Okay. So last thing that, uh, I was gonna touch about, touch on was a dress code update. And so I did pass along, I don't know if you've had it, you guys are plenty busy yourselves. I did pass it along, along the feedback that we got from our school administrators. And so I was very happy with the response. I really stressed it as much as I could. So we had forty-one responses. Uh, and again, it's kind of, Pam did a great job of summarizing that for us. So some, a lot of good comments. You know, I would say overall, the, the consensus was that we need to take a deeper look at this, which I don't think anybody is surprised by. Um, definitely leaning, and I'm looking at the numbers now, just you can kind of look at those several, those four or five different graphs. I mean, it does appear like our administrators as a whole, and again, not all of them, but in general, um, are interested in maybe some overhauls that we can make. Maybe, and again, you guys saw how I framed that, the questions. It was more like, do, are we interested at least in looking at a policy that, like, again, the, the verbiage I used was that more closely resembles most other school districts in the state. You guys gave me great feedback uh, about like getting specific with our admins and giving them examples of, of different school districts. So that's what I gave them. I gave them four different, like urban school districts for them to take a look at. Some of them were very scripted, some of them were more general. Uh, but like I said, mm, the feedback I got for the most part was that administrators, from their perspective, would like to relook at it. So here's kind of what I'm thinking. And again, I wanna be open to your feedback. Um, again, me coming in new, not knowing the lay of the land that well yet, but what I was thinking was and I wanna be, you know, there are, there are some people who are waiting like, okay, well, school year's starting here in two weeks. Like, what are we gonna do? At this point, I would still, and again, if you feel differently, we can, I, open for conversation, but I still feel like we probably at a point now where we need to start with what we've got. Um, but my thought is that during the month of September, and I've been thinking about this a lot, during the month of September, I would, um, do a full scale, like get feedback from the community, uh, get it really well scripted. I know we've got a feedback a few different times, but really like really try to drive home, community and staff. In the meantime, in the meantime, during the month of September, form a committee made up of admins, teachers, parents, students, and perhaps a school board member or two. Um, and then, so that would be the month of September. October and November, I would like to bring the, the committee together for two, if not three times to, and really guide them through some like, some conversations, looking at what policies could look like. And then provide an update to the board on the, at the November fourteenth board meeting. The November fourteenth board meeting would be a chance to say, hey, here's how the committee meetings have gone. Here's the way we're leaning, kind of get your feedback to dr- drive the next, the last meeting. Do one more meeting in November and then come back December ninth with some sort of decision, recommendation. Uh, whether it's, hey, we wanna look at this for second semester, or hey, we're not ready at this time to make a change. Um, that's kind of what I'm thinking is do a committee approach with a dozen to fifteen, sixteen different people from different groups. Guide through, through discussion and look at perhaps something for second semester based on their feedback and based on your guidance as well. So that's where I'm at right now, based on that feedback. And again, I'm not saying it's a, anything's a done, I'm saying like we would bring that committee together and see, based on the feedback also in September, uh, from our community and staff and, and base our decision based on the feedback that we receive. So again, I, I would prefer that sort of approach where there's some buy-in, where I get a chance to like really look at the data, really, um, have a chance to speak with different people, different perspectives, and then come back with a well-formed, uh, recommendation in December for something potentially we could try out if we go that direction for second semester. That's my preference would be, cause I just, I feel, there's so much going on right now. I'm a little bit nervous about rushing anything through. I've heard that, but I know we're at all different perspectives on this too. So that's kind of my like, psh, spit it all out there. That's what I'm thinking right now. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I like that plan. I know it is difficult for people to have to buy things for one semester, um, but we don't need to rush anything through right now.
A big part of the problem that has been though that, um, kids are, are not in compliance and staff is dealing with that every single day. So if, and the letter that came from West High said that children will be sent home to change, they will not come back. You will be losing instructional time because a child has on leggings rather than khaki pants. I don't see how that's good business. I don't. Um, so yeah, Mr. Mihhe listed the things that he feels are an issue. Um, yoga pants, girls, sweatpants, athletic shorts, hoods worn up, bonnets, which is an African American. Um, uh, ways to keep your hair, the way, I'm not gonna pretend I know, my, my daughter was trying to explain it, and then crop tops, which is girls. So I'm not saying any of these things are great, right? But yoga pants is not the same as leggings and are we going to make any tweaks for these things that kids are getting sent home for all the time? The ones that we keep hearing over and over again. I read through the remarks. I read the teachers and I, I mean, I read the staff saying, we cannot keep, we can't, we can't enforce this. It's just not working. So if you want your, if we want the kids to go sit in in-school suspension, then that's what's gonna happen.
Well, personally, I don't think it can be done in two weeks. It has to go through review.
No, I agree, but this discussion started. If we had done it when this discussion started, we would have been able to make it happen.
But I guess you have to look at where you're at now. We have a new superintendent and school starts in two weeks. So, I mean, I would say that it is not in our best interest to rush something through right now.
It is not in our best interest to, to send children home. It is not in our best interest to have children leave school. I, if that means that they all go to in-school suspension and that's on their record, then I guess that's what's gonna happen. I cannot see the benefit in telling a child who has shown up for school to leave.
But they know what they're supposed to wear.
So that's gonna be enough that you want them to leave school?
They, they, they know the rules, right? They know the policy, right?
Okay.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, there, we gotta hold accountability when accountability's behold. If they know the rules, they knowingly, you know, show up, then, you know, there, there's consequences for it. I'm not saying that it's a great, that they got missed class and that.
We already have enormous issues with achievement gaps from COVID and with the gap between, um, different populations in the buildings. How in the world is sending kids home going to work into our mission? Our mission is to teach kids. That is what we are here to do. We are here to educate kids. You tell them to wear whatever you want them to wear, that's fine, but please don't send them home. Don't. Make them sitting in school and have them do their schoolwork there. I cannot see the benefit of taking a child who has gotten up in the morning, gotten themselves to school when we know how many kids don't go on a regular basis, who don't show up. Jared, what, what do you feel about that?
I guess my question is, has it been, had, was it, has it been a huge issue? And I don't know this, like last year.
Stephanie, do you know at all as far as kids being sent home? Do you know?
I don't know as much from the high schools as I do middle schools. And I knew, I know overall as a practice, they don't send middle school students home.
They do in the high schools.
Cause they haven't heard from me.
It is in the letter that came from my daughter that they will be sent home. So that is going to be the practice.
Didn't come from here to tell him to do that.
Pardon me?
He's saying that he didn't direct the high school people to tell you you're going to be sending your people.
But Jared's accountable for this because this, this, this is the principle that you, that they are accountable to you, correct? So the fact that this was sent out, did you not know that?
Well, I think it's, it, it's pretty harsh to, to spring this on him right at a meeting without talking to him about a certain letter or something like that. Uh, we haven't really given him a chance to prepare himself.
No, I, I, he, he, I've given this to Jared ahead of time. He knew this, correct? You read the email.
Yeah, I got it.
So he knew it. I did not spring this on anybody. I wouldn't do that.
So, I'm, my question is, are they, are kids being, and I don't know this, are kids being sent home or are they begin, being sent home after giving an option to wear something that the school has? And I don't, I know like when my kiddos were there, there was an option for.
And I don't, I know like when my kiddos were there, there was an option for a clothing closet or.
It says that there, but we have children of every shape and size. Are our clothing closets equipped for all the, the shapes and sizes of the kids that are in the buildings?
I don't know. I just think we might want to be, you know, we might be getting too far in the weeds on something that wasn't on the board agenda either.
I agree.
We, I mean, this is something that's, you know, we might need to have a workshop or whatever discussion or, you know, let Jared fall for a plan. But, you know, it wasn't, I just wondered if I was bringing up and getting into debate on something.
And Stacy, I don't think anyone is at all saying here, I mean, with what Jared said with the admin survey. But personally, I would like to get teacher input. That's the most important to me, is teachers. Because they're the ones that are enforcing it or not enforcing it.
I concur.
And so we showing them a new, something written up potentially. I'd like the teachers to say, I can enforce that or I cannot enforce it.
But why was that not sent out when, like right after the, the, or the admin?
We didn't direct the superintendent to do that.
We, he talked about giving surveys.
He did a survey.
I don't remember that it was going to be limited to admins only.
I don't remember that it was or wasn't.
Part of who it was going to.
I wanted, I mean, I was pretty certain that our leadership would say, this is something we want to look at closer. I want to have that data point, want to share with that, you guys with that data point before moving forward.
Because the, the, the survey was way back in like July twenty-sixth, something like that, right?
Right.
It closed last Friday.
It closed August first.
So it was, okay.
Right, July thirty-first or something.
All right, wait, I'm getting, my day's confused.
No, I mean.
Either way, it just closed, it just closed on Friday.
You had, you had a whole family weekend there where I would hope they were done online.
But I guess, and part of it is too, when we're getting ready to start a new school year, there are things that have to get done.
No, I agree completely. No, of course, yeah. Um, I would like us to maybe consider, like we did last year, to look at the one or two items that are causing issues.
Right, because over the years, we have made changes.
Yes, very recently we did.
Like it was eleven years ago when I was on this board. And Lyle and I were the only ones here when it changed. It's nothing like that dress code then. It is so much more relaxed and so much different than it was eleven years when it was established. You know, that was specific colors, that was specific. But all that does need to be looked at by our legal team to make sure that's all okay, policy and review. I mean, there's a process that we can't just say we're changing this. And because we say, you know, there's a process that goes into that before we give the final yes or no.
Right, and, and I agree. We're going to start out the year the way it's going to start out, and that's fine. I'm asking that we please do not send students home.
No, I, I think that's fair. I mean.
I'm not comfortable with students being told to leave school because of the pants that they are wearing. I just, I mean, you're going to do what you're going to do. I don't feel that that is, is, is accomplishing our mission.
But, and I think, I think in, in a whole universe of people, you're going to have people like Jesse saying, I'm saying that in life we have rules, and if we break the rules, we're going to be held accountable for breaking the rules. So if we know that we're not supposed to do this, you know, we're know we're not supposed to run a stop sign, but we do it, we're going to be held accountable if we run the stop sign. So if we are not supposed to wear this to school and we do, there could be a consequence.
We're talking about the difference between leggings that have a pocket and don't have a pocket. That's the minutia that we're at right now.
Yeah, that, that is minutia, and I don't think the superintendent's comments at the end of a board meeting are a time to go over minutia and make these decisions.
He asked for our input, Janelle.
I know he did, but there's such a thing as input.
He wouldn't have asked.
There's such a thing as input and there's such a thing as the proper time and place. So I think we're going a little bit over.
Janelle, I would ask that you please stop right now and we can have this discussion not here. Are you okay with that? Please? Thank you.
India, do you have anything to say on this topic? Otherwise, we'll let Jared finish his superintendent comments.
Oh, I am here, I am here.
Sure, you are, Stacy. I woke you up.
Jared, hold on. I just wanted to just be clear, the expectation that we are still going with the same guidelines, with the expectation of there will be consequences because as much as we think there might be students getting sent home, there's also the whole idea that they're not doing anything either. So doing the pendulum in both ways, I just want to make sure that there will be consequences or there won't be consistently as, as we go forward trying to make this decision.
And that has been the point from the beginning. Parents stood here for four or five hours and said they're not enforcing it consistently. And that, that's the problem.
Regardless of the dress code we put in place is what my point has been. Regardless of what we have, if we're not doing anything about it, then what's the point of having one? So, starting with school starts, what's the expectation you have told the administrators and the administrators themselves, teachers? And trickle down the fact to parents, what's the expectation, starting on school, when school starts?
Thank you, India.
That was the question.
Kind of thought so. So, you know, I, I think maybe you're, you're giving me another, uh, agenda item to speak with the admins about on Wednesday. This is tricky. Um, I do think they're going to feel, a part of it, I think they're going to feel a little bit of relief knowing that we are going to be, once I lay out that, and I'm going to refine that timeline for them. If you guys feel good about that, I'll tweak that and kind of, uh, introduce that to them on Wednesday. I do feel like there's going to be a little bit of relief, a little bit of maybe, um, empowerment if they know that we are going to be looking at this, but hey, we need your help. It's tricky because even in the feedback, it said it's, especially, and it was hard to tell who was. My sense in the feedback we got was that the high school felt it was difficult to enforce, where the elementary thought it was not too bad. So my, my guess is the people, you know, they were kind of all over the place on the enforcement. And part of me was like, how, how, I wanted them to feel empowered and anonymous in their feedback. And I didn't want to narrow it down by school, so I didn't do that. But I do feel like if I, the, the high school admins are going to say like, hey, it's, on one hand, we're hearing like, keep the kids in school. Let, let, you know, be, be lean, you know, I don't know if lenient is the right word, but, um, on the other hand, I'm, you know, I'm hearing that we want to make sure that we're enforcing it. So it's, it, it's, I'm not going to lie, I think it's going to be a tricky thing even through this first semester to really get, because I'm hearing kind of both sides of it a little bit. But I don't think it hurts for us to revisit it and to have some conversation. And if we're unclear with, especially with our secondary, like we can have further conversation. I know we're two weeks away from school starting, but I can definitely meet with those guys and, and clear up any questions they might have. But again, I think my experience is when people know a solution, we're working on it, like here's the plan. Here's the, here's the next steps. Um, there's just a little bit of, okay, good, well, let's make it, let's do the best we can this semester. Let's see what happens and let's go from there. So I, I do feel like there's going to be a sense of relief knowing there's, there's a plan in action. Does that help, India? I don't know if I'm helping you or not, because this is like a trick, I mean, this has been a decade of like, of, of, been, you know, making it work, but it's been tricky. Uh, and I don't know if I have the answer for you guys right now on what the magic bullet is.
One hundred percent. I agree. I mean, it's going to be hard as we try to flush this out. I agree with Stacy. We have been acting for certain things and we have not got, like a report just coming back after we made changes last time. Okay, moving forward, now that we do have something in place that you said, as far as we're going to make a plan, we're going to have action steps, and we will have something for parents and families and teachers by second semester. That's what we're going to do. So I agree, at least we have a plan. It may not be the one that we want, but we just have to be in communicated, communication of what we're doing. And I think that's the biggest thing that we have not helped, been accountable, helped people accountable. We have been able to communicate with our constituents because we don't know. And that's the frustration that I think, I think we hear in the voices of the people who are talking because we don't know, and so how do we, how do we share that? How do administrators share that? We don't know. So hopefully we can stop being like we don't know and be in the midst of it and say, this is the plan.
But India, I have a question and maybe you can help me because I have had people contact me and say, I didn't hear the dress code changed. So who is promoting that the dress code is changed?
It's not what, it's changed.
I don't know. If, if, if we are failing to do that, I, all the parents that have talked to me about it never knew there was going to be any changes. You know, so I guess I'm confused as to what, what's driving people in the community to think there's a change? Who has communicated that?
The people who are actually in the classroom in the school. We getting feedback not just from parents, but also from administrators or teachers in school who are like, we have to, we have to be the ones who have to push out the consequences on this, and it's hard. But, and if they're not doing anything, that's hard. So it may not always come from the family. It might also be from the teachers just voicing their opinion like, it's frustrating. Like they're not doing anything, they're sending them back to class, they're not changing them. And if you go into the schools, you can see the kids with crop tops on who've gone all day. And it's like, when will that approve? So it's not, it's personal. Like I could go to the schools and see high school students wearing, who are out of dress code in the seventh hour. So what was the point of that?
Oh, my kids got sent home seventh hour, made it all day, you know, it's subjectivity. It is.
India, I agree with you when you talked about.
Better.
When you talked about us being accountable at the six-month mark because we, we made that same pledge last year and we did not do it. So if, if we are going to have this timeline, we need to be able to say with confidence to everybody that yes, we are going to follow through with it.
And in fairness, I think we do need to move on because this isn't an agenda item. And Jared presented a plan and we will work on it next and we'll let him finish the comments and board comments. And then our agenda is done for this evening.
Uh, I actually don't have any other comments, to be honest. That was it. That's why I kept her for the last. Maybe I should have did it first, right? But no, it's been a good, a good first month. And again, varying, I'm looking, just looking at some of the feedback from today, like a great first day with our leadership team. And I'm looking forward to next week, so.
Thank you. And Janelle?
Uh, thanks to everyone who does everything that they do for the students.
Thank you. India?
No comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse?
Yes, I'll just, any families listening out there, if you haven't done your online registration, please go ahead and get that done. That really helps with our administrators to kind of plan resources needed and kind of get that along. And sooner we have those numbers, the better off we are and help us make key decisions and get personnel where they're going to be at for the year. And I'm sure they would appreciate knowing that sooner rather than later too, they can plan ahead. And, you know, it, I did mine a couple of weeks ago, you know, two kids. It took about fifteen minutes. And if you don't have resources, you know, uh, contact office here, they'll find out a way to, you know, you're, get you in here or get somewhere for you to get that work done. But please, uh, consider that a urgent task to do and not put it off for a couple more weeks in this, a couple of days for school. Because then it could impact your student if we don't have the right staffing in the right places, so.
Thank you, Jesse. Stacy?
Okay, just a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank Janelle for everything you did with the bands this summer. My daughter was very excited to see Miss Huen out on the field again. So, um, I wanted to thank every single staff member who's returning to either their position, to a new position. And, uh, all of our many, many, many new hires. Because, I mean, we know these past few years have, have tested everybody, but it's the educators that are now seeing the fallout with our kids. And to stick with it and to help build them is everything, for them to have that consistency. And then I got to give a shout out. I missed my thirtieth reunion, class reunion on Saturday. We were in St., I'm, I'm old. We were in St. Louis and we had planned to be back in time. And then the kids had something they wanted to see and we didn't get back till three AM. So, uh, congratulations to the West High class of nineteen ninety-two.
Awesome. Thank you, Stacy. Well, and tonight I just wanted, we had a few, um, gifts on our agenda. And I just wanted to really thank the Community Foundation Northeast Iowa as they support our district so much and, and help our schools and our students. And also the Sunshine Charitable Foundation gave a gift tonight and, um, no one could attend. But I just, we really appreciate it. And we can't run this district without the help of the whole community. And so we really, really appreciate that. So we will be, you know, sending you formal thank yous, but I just wanted to publicly do that too. And then also, lastly, I will talk about the first days of school. And parents out there, or friends of parents, or whomever you are, get your child to school. We need them in their seat. And the first day of school is August twenty-third for kindergarten first, second, kindergarten first, second, sixth, and ninth. So kind of transitional years, brand new, one, two, six, nine. Then on the twenty-fourth, we'll add in the grades three, four, five, seven, eight, ten, and eleven and twelve. So we're letting our students transitioning, um, have a day to themselves to get around their buildings, which has worked excellent in the past. It was a super idea that, um, came from administration and Stephanie and her gang, and that worked very well. And then pre-K doesn't start till August twenty-ninth. But if we can have kids in seats, we can start the educational year, and that's what's important. So that's all my comments for tonight. So can I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some mood.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And meeting's adjourned. Thank you.